Good evening, we are continuing our meeting. We've had an executive session that started at five fifteen. We are continuing into the main portion of the meeting at six o'clock on May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Good evening and thank you for joining us. Tonight's agenda consists of a budget workshop. So first, we have the schools update. We have Superintendent Jim Hodgkin here. If you want to come up, we've got some updates since our last meeting. Thank you for coming tonight. We also have Chair of the School Board, Alicia Lawson here.
Okay. Not really sure, they didn't get a lot of guidance in terms of what exactly you're looking for. The board has improved the budget since the last funding that it were changes that were made after. I think I. I don't think it was a question about whether the board needed to go back and be this because it was a change in revenue. And there is no reason for that. What I mean by that is one of the things we have to do is for the warrant is we have to determine how much over under the EPS we are. And in doing that, I just I printed off a new two seventy-nine and noted that on the. Most recent one, I went with the January, I mean, the, yeah. I went by the January seventeenth one, which doesn't usually be notified if they changed. And when I printed off on March twenty-nine, I noticed that we picked up an initial hundred and nine thousand dollars. The revenue, so I just changed that and sent that out. That took the bottom line impact on the taxpayers from six point two-two to four point ninety. And that's the only change.
Okay, great.
Do you want to hear the changes, the additional changes that the board made?
Yeah, that would be great.
Okay. The we had told me that we were going to cut the director of technology and we had only put in. Part of what the savings would be because we anticipated we would keep a third tech. And then we decided subsequently, the administrative team decided subsequently that we're going to go in two texts for next year. So an additional forty-eight thousand six hundred and eight dollars was cut from that position. We took a look at a couple of these payments that we have coming up, one in July and one in August. A total of fifty-nine thousand seven hundred and six dollars, and we're going to pay that out of this current budget year. And we took a further look at the FMLA increases that we, the new legislation that went through. And we cut an initial ten thousand dollars out of there. And then we added. At one point I talked to you about that I had asked this school board to allow me to go to three days next week, next week, yeah, next year. And we met in the executive session, had a conversation about that and then decided not to do that. And so we had to add back in forty-two thousand dollars. And then. We added in a up to halftime position for an addition for a new, a new position for title line affirmative action officer. That's sixty thousand dollars being put back in, so. That took the, that took the total to six point two-two. That's what the budget, the board voted on and then. I'm not going to paperwork here. Anyway, that came up to something less than that for the impact for the town. And then with the one hundred nine thousand dollars, it was six point four to the town. And then with the additional hundred nine thousand. Six hundred and one dollars and one cent, that took it down to four point ninety.
All right, thanks for coming. Did, can you break down when we reallocated funds? Did any of that priority change when you discovered this funding?
No.
Okay, and then so half or was it roughly half went to transportation? And then the other half we used offset.
Yeah, it's exactly more like three quarters for transportation and then it's all twenty-five percent to. Capital improvement.
Okay, so you were able to use this then to make the additional changes that you were just talking about.
We didn't use any of that money, that eight hundred thousand that you set aside was is did not impact the. That was gone, that went from undesigned it to designated it, you designated it to. Buses and transportation, transportation and capital maintenance.
Oh, that's right, capital maintenance, okay.
So that what you'll see is, because we, you want to do that. Use that money and some money that we had left in my general charter, it is this year, but basically before the end of the. Fiscal year, so before July one, the entire middle school parking lot will be repaved.
Okay.
And anybody who's been up there knows it needs to be done.
And then you were able to get the, what, two buses?
We had two very, uh, three branded buses, yeah.
Okay.
With this, with the other, whatever it spoke. Seven hundred, not quite seven hundred.
Gotcha, there.
Those three buses, those are the new diesel buses?
Those are the new diesel buses and those were the emergency funding that we got approved for. Which is a misnomer because there's no funding that goes with that approval. That means we have the right to buy three more buses.
Is that a contracted service or we just bought them all, right?
Where we buy them, we just buy them all, right, with the money that you designated.
Any other questions?
And we do give reverse to those over the next three years, so we will, we will see a little bit of that. Well, we'll see all that revenue back, but not all.
In each budget, yeah.
All right, thank you very much, Jim, for coming in.
Any questions?
All right, thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
All right, next on the agenda, we have the library.
Yes.
There are four leaders here.
Do you have the, okay, they they've got the printout.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, so usually each year I talk for ten minutes about how both the libraries. And you told me to throw that away.
Everyone knows, Richard, everyone knows.
All right, so. But I do want to thank you guys, this isn't an easy process. And definitely being on the council is, is thankless, there's a lot of balancing, so we're trying to do what we can to fit into that puzzle. So I apologize, it's not on the screen for everybody, but it sounds like you guys have the, you know, the PowerPoint here, okay? So the first slide here, fiscal year twenty-four budget that we're operating in now, four hundred and thirty thousand two ninety-nine. Year-to-date expenditure, unfortunately, the last update that we had was the end of February. Just under sixty-seven percent spent, and I do want to correct, the math is a little off, and I think it says seventy-five percent. The way through the year, we were actually sixty-seven percent all the way through the year when this was printed. So we were basically exactly on track with our expenditures at the time that we were able to get out our most recent numbers. Any questions about that? The next slide, we are requesting four fifty-one seventy-six. This is an increase of just over four and a half percent, four point six percent from the last fiscal year. And if you just skip right to the next slide, you can talk about where that comes. This is my fifteenth budget presentation to the council, this is probably the most simple. There's really only three places that the increases are coming. The bulk of that, seventy-eight point four percent of the increase is from wage adjustments. And the rest is from building maintenance to education workshops, I'll just talk about that briefly. Building maintenance is sort of something that we can't control. That is, you know, plumbing issues or HVAC contracts, filters, refrigerant lines, cleaning the coils, checking the thermostat. Repairing leaks, inspecting the flu, lubricating all the parts, pest control, contract, cleaning gutters, drains, windows. And then some of the erosion control and flooding that we talked about last month. This is just based on the historical data that we've been, we've been spending over the last couple of years requires at least this increase. To be honest with you, I think we're actually underestimating a little bit on what we'll probably need for the coming year. And the education workshops is something that I talked about with my board and with Anthony. Entering my fifteenth year here, we really never budgeted much for the main library association conference, which virtually. Every library in Maine sends a representative to, and then the annual conference. This past year was in Chicago, it was the first time that I was ever sent to the annual conference. They typically recommend that as a director of our size, you'd want to do two to three years. So we added that into the budget, so those are really the only additions. And then we. We actually re-grouped the first budget that we gave to Anthony at about a six percent increase. We re-grouped after we got some feedback on that and we made some reductions. So we took, we took two thousand dollars out of adult books. Kind of sounds like a lot, but it's basically going from buying about ten books for a week to around six to eight. It's kind of as low as you can go while still being a member of the library consortium that we're in. And then we took five hundred dollars out each from children's books and teen books. Five hundred dollars out of copies and printing, and then we also reduced our elevator line. By two thousand because of the fact that we're, we're on track now to install a new elevator, so we stopped. Doing repairs on that, it's currently inoperable. But the good news is we're, we're starting the construction this summer. And then if you look at the historical cost of our events lines, events and summer reading, which is on the second library page, page twelve-seven. You can see that we were usually spent around fifteen thousand on events. We're only requesting thirteen, so I had initially requested that and went back and took that up. So I'm just kind of sharing with you guys the process. Any questions about that slide before we go on?
Thanks, pretty well right now.
So the next slide, Anthony just asked for some relevant points about the library, what we're doing. And, and you know, what our operations look like really briefly. We have three full-time staff members, myself, an adult library, and a children's library. We have three part-time assistants that work fifteen hours each, two part-time librarians who do programming. One for teen, one for little kids, one part-time catalog library at eight hours and one part-time custodian at eight hours. In two thousand twenty-three, we had sixteen volunteers, they donated over four thousand hours of time. It's roughly eighty thousand dollar value, so we're really like, we have a really good volunteer supply. We have about five thousand per month in circulation, two hundred people a day. Over seven hundred people attended library programs each month in two thousand twenty-three, over six hundred people use our public computers throughout the month. That's my shortest presentation I've ever done this summer. If you guys have any questions. Capital time.
Richard, thanks for this enlarged print by the way.
Okay, yeah.
How many schoolchildren during the school day attend the library?
Well, it depends obviously on the month of the day.
Yeah.
Today was quite the day at the library, we had two second grade and one third grade class that came down to the library. Each class is about, Superintendent, I think about fifteen kids, so like today we have forty-five kids plus chaperones. The Miss Stacy, the services librarian that does programming, she does a literacy craft and gives them a tour of the library. Signs them up for library cards. And that happens all, all school year, so this Friday we have four classes coming. She's going to try to fit in in between jumping into daycare and events.
Thank you, I did bring that up because in my mind at least, that's a big plus.
Yeah.
It's not shown here.
Yeah.
You know, creating the ability to bring the school kids over, introduce them to the library and educational.
Yeah.
Things, so you know, that's another thing you're probably, it doesn't really show up in your budget.
Yeah, right, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Richard, for coming, appreciate it. So, let's take advantage of that, you have Alicia here. So with, with the school libraries, we haven't had any integration at all, correct, meaning that your libraries.
No, we have done, we have done, we actually, what we did was with the school librarians, we. Set them up so they can actually sign kids up for an hour at the library and then request books to us because they don't. We have the advantage of being part of the Minerva Consortium, which seventy libraries may access like six million items. So almost daily we get an email saying, John Smith needs six books on this science topic. We request them, they come into us, and then either that's the librarian comes down and picks them up or sometimes Stacy just runs them up the hill and drops them off. So we do a lot, a lot of integration though.
Okay, great, and then if there was ever, do you guys do regularly meets to see if there are other ways that either other, there'd be cost sharing or with ordering or whatnot?
Yeah, we, we just had a great meeting with our new teen librarian who got invited to the humanities night. So that was the first time we did that, we had like a tape there, and we introduced a lot of the teen age.
Yeah.
And I'm really excited about our new teen librarian because she is really pushing to, because we've done a ton of integration at kind of the middle school. Level, and we're, we're trying to push a little bit more at the high school level.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the council? All right, thanks very much, Richard.
Thanks, so, so one, could you hear all the contingency from the library board of trustees? I thought it might be a time to also talk about their CIP projects because.
Right there.
Your, well. Your call last CIP discussion, there was some talk about what we might be able to do to alleviate some of the flooding in and around the library. Richard's done some research since then and he's got some, some options to lay.
Yeah, so I met with John Longfellow, I don't know if you guys know him, but he owns Longfellow's landscaping excavation. Came highly recommended. He came down to the library and spent a bit of time there really analyzing our problem inside and out. He did agree with me that the seventy-five thousand dollar number is probably the number you're looking at in terms of. You know, not seeing this problem again for fifty years, however, he is proposing a French drain system. Combined with taking out all the landscaping on the north side, sloping and sloping the ground. He is convinced that if he does that, it will be ninety percent there, and instead of flooding every two or three years, it'd be every twenty or thirty years. Which, A, is, is fifteen thousand dollars, or I think it's fourteen thousand to be exact. Which is a lot nicer than seventy-five, and every twenty or thirty years sounds a lot nicer than every two or three. That would, that would. Maybe not solve our problem, but greatly alleviate our problem on the north side of the building that faces the lake. And then we did discuss the south side, that's in between the water district and the library because that side also floods. It did make a hard number on that, but it is a smaller problem. The problem there is really that the ground is just higher than the door, so it just kind of trips off and then goes underneath the door. So he seemed to think that just kind of grading the area. Over there would probably do the trick, so you wouldn't need like an entire French drain system, so. I think, well, Anthony and I talked about, I don't, sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but was doing fifteen. For the north side and then adding some money for the elevator contingency, which we will need.
My question is, is this over, this is over one budget year or is it?
Yeah, yeah, correct, because keep in mind that the elevator project happened this year. And, you know, we, as we talked about previously, we will need more contingency, Cammy was right.
Yeah.
And it pains me to say this, but he was also right about that. The vegetation on that one side of the, the library, what he proposed is exactly what Longfellow said should be done. And so we spent fifteen thousand dollars there, and we appropriated a similar amount the following year for the other side of the building. That way it sort of keeps your CIP costs.
Level two.
Yeah, right, so, so that's our, that's our recommendation.
So, so I think it'd be thirty thousand total for the elevator contingency and the French drain on the north side.
An additional bit to make here.
Yeah.
And how much more for the contingency, if you can just be grabbing us on that?
So, Richard, were we talking twenty or thirty thousand?
The additional.
For the, for the elevator contingency.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's hard for me to predict, I mean, twenty, obviously, if you pattern to me, because it's less heading if we're, if we run into HVAC problems that are bigger than, than we expect. And we could, we could always request to roll it over. Yes, it'd be, it'd be thirty-five total, if we did twenty and fifteen, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and, and what I was going to say is you could always request to roll over. Whatever we don't spend on the elevator into next year and help us out, that's south side.
Yeah.
Any questions, Richard?
Go ahead.
Yeah. Irrespective of all these, I heard with the scheme that they'll be reasonably successful.
Yeah.
Is there a plan to install a sump pump in that basement? I understand it, it might be on ledge.
Yeah.
But in the event you do get a flood, it will at least prevent an excessive amount of water.
Yeah, there's not at the moment.
It would have.
We have had a couple people look at it.
Pumped into that drain off of the, at the intersection, right?
Charles Street.
Yeah.
I think we did mention, I think we had talked about it when we talked for.
I'm talking about right inside the water on the floor.
Yeah, but it has to go somewhere, you don't have to get plumbed into that.
Even if it's centered outside towards the street, it's just that.
Yeah.
If all our efforts fail.
Yeah.
They last twenty years and they fail, okay, then you have all of these expensive books, paperwork, everything in there.
Yeah.
Machinery, at least to some point, we want to keep the water happening on the floor or in on the floor, and you won't get a real flood.
Yeah.
So it would be my thought.
Yeah, yeah, I'll explore that.
Thank you.
Eric, thank you for bringing that, uh, budget forward. Questions about the drainage issue, about the CIP? Have we talked about public works people at all? We have equipment that can do some grading, that can use some.
Really?
And, and they know how to tell if it's draining, it's not, it's, it's not rocket science. To mitigate some of that value there, meaning that here, grading it down, it's just to be, we got the excavator to do it, we got the loader to do it. And we're moving some of that debris that's all the shrubbery and so, to save on some of the. Stuff that, that Longfellow's going to do, that way we can save enough money to make sure we can get the out of the diamonds, right?
I do, I do think some of that, like a little bit of vegetation, Jim, I agree with you. I'd want to solve the public works, right?
No, I would too, I think do some of that other work, but yeah, that would definitely be off the table.
Yeah, I think we should look at that, what will you, what will trigger?
If I could jump in on that. Right now, we're still one person down in public works, right? At least we did, yeah, and looking at the project up on High Street. And looking at the fact that we're paving before we're raising manholes, which doesn't directly involve public works, but we're not. Addressing the ditching and grading alongside the new paving, because we're just not getting things done. And another project's public works, so I disagree with you, but it just seems like we're not going to get it done.
Understood, it just, I think we just, we look at that with our, as far as our down guy. That might rectify itself, I mean, I don't, I don't want to not look at something just because we're afraid we don't have enough employees, but we, we may have somebody back for workforce. So I have a tendency to look at it before you just say no.
Yeah, definitely wouldn't want to do that, but, but I would also want to explore.
Exactly.
I would go with that and get my book.
I'm, I'm going to defer all that to you.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to give you a little.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Richard.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Richard, thank you, Richard.
Great, next up we have code enforcement, we're pressing on here.
Thank you, thank you, David. Thank you very much, appreciate all the work that you guys did, thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thank you.
I just made it in the, and then the other ones have been lovely stuff, so I deserve one of the best. They're now the house.
Really nice.
All right, there's a three-page PowerPoint.
Great.
My budget's even smaller than the library's, if you can see. It's down about eight percent. It is not a lot too, there's actually a real large influx lately on new houses, so. The subdivisions I'm concerned, the pillars start to fill up, so. That's kind of exciting news. As far as the whole world, we are bringing education to the town for contractors and plumbers. Instead of me going out of town, they're coming here. We're really, the budget is, is, it's down about eight percent, you've done away with the plumbing inspector. I'll be doing all the plumbing inspections now, it's up surface, so George Byers no longer a plumbing inspector. Really, that's the, a little bit of increase in part of it, the overall, what I said was down. I have a permanent program I have, it was a little bit of an increase, some, some of my. Additional letters that we added on with Dawn and planning and so planning boards. It's really about it, it's not a new budget, so.
Any questions?
Sounds good, everyone, thank you.
Thank you, Art.
Thank you, Mark.
Happy Monday.
Next, we'll move to the planner, we have Don Emerson here.
Hello. Don Emerson, town planner. There has been a net decrease of five point three percent. For planning and the planning board and seventy point three, seven percent for the zone board. My position is new, we did decrease some of the consulting fees and there's a migration of office expenses. Townwide administration, and that's really the, really the audience if anyone has any questions.
Any questions? Thank you very much, Don.
I just was going to ask, are we finished finally with those maps?
Exciting news, they're posted online right now, the planning board asked that they do need available to the public for two weeks. So if you have it already, go online and you'll see that there's a PDF of the digital zoning map and a GIS version, you can click on it.
So, and if you, if you're referring to the maps at the back of the comp plan, so we have pretty copies in, in Dawn's office. So I alerted you guys to that a couple of weeks ago, and so if you want to take, check those out, just make an appointment with her.
And these are the digital maps.
Oh, the digital map. Well, we'll, we'll talk about digital maps here in just a second.
Oh, fine, okay, you can shut my mic.
It's a zoning map, just for, but I was thinking about, thank you, Don.
Don, I have a quick question, I don't believe he's not a new real host, Anthony may jump in. This, this following year, your purview with the tip, and the tip we're getting at the current rule now, in the budget part of it. That doesn't have to come in, I mean, just confused.
Yes, so I can speak to that, Jim, so you may recall the administrative services budget, we increased the legal services line item.
Right.
By five thousand dollars. By five thousand dollars, so we can look at extending the tip.
Correct.
Uh which expires in twenty twenty six. So Phil Sosier and I already had an appointment in June to to start discussing that. We will definitely be looking at a different mix of how those tips are gonna be used.
That's what I was thinking, so somebody just could come into it, probably will affect at dawn.
Oh, no doubt, no doubt about that. And one of the things that Phil has mentioned to me is that there is an opportunity to uh help. Fund some affordable housing uh in something like the mill.
Yeah.
So so I think that's something we'll probably be very interested in.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Don. Next, we have the investment building.
Yes, our public works uh director, a definite advantage, so he is not available this week. So I'm gonna go over this, because it's a it's a pretty simple budget, but you see that uh. Uh this past year, the budget was about fourteen thousand dollars. Uh and we've spent about fifty percent of that through uh from about seventy five percent of this year. Most of that is for just details. And so this year, we have reduced that budget to by five hundred dollars. Uh that represents a three and a half percent uh decrease. And what's driving that is that we've lowered the propane cost by about ten percent. That's that five hundred dollars just based on the experience along. So if you folks have questions about the investment could uh budget, I'll do my best to answer them.
We have one.
I knew you, yes. Matt was here, you wouldn't ask any questions. It's your head to tap, I gotta ask. So last year, this was a talk about with Matt and what we're dealing with down there in the building. And I know we got two huge modems, which are heating that big garage space for, my thinking, nothing. Because there's nothing happening in that space. I believe we can have those capped off, shut off. If they need to heat just the office, then we just heat just the office. But there's no reason to run those, any type of heat out there, which is continuing, which is still adding to that propane or any type of utility.
That's a big building, right?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, that's there's no.
Anyway, because and and I wish Matt weren't here to speak to this, because this is outside of my my wheelhouse. But my understanding is, in the wintertime, we keep that heated to forty degrees.
Yep.
And that's simply so that.
Probably.
Because of the the equipment that we store. And 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 I don't know, you know, I don't know enough about equipment to say that that's.
There's no equipment out there that needs to be at a certain temperature for freezing. There's no pipes out there. There's nothing out there. The bathroom, everything is in the office area. And I think Matt was actually the one that said he could shut it down. He's the one that brought it up, so I'm wondering if that can be, if you could look into that and see if you can pull trigger on it from our last year's meeting.
Yes, I can whip into that and uh if that's if that's the case, we will pull the trigger. So I'll keep you folks posted.
All right, sounds good. Thank you.
Let me write that down.
Next, on our, we've done our kind of assessing.
Yeah. And I'm gonna present that as well. And this is fairly easy, although we will talk about a potential uh. Project uh that relates to assessing. So this past year's budget is uh seventy six thousand dollars. We've reduced that to sixty two thousand dollars, which have been decreasing nearly nineteen percent. And the reason for that is that we transitioned, you may recall, to a fixed fee contract, so that our costs are certain. So in the past, we have uh budgeted a certain amount and then we're charged by the app. And so we put that contract out to R F P this year and we got a fixed uh rate. And so that. That uh that sixty two thousand dollars, that's the fixed fee for that contract. So that that results in.
Remind me, that was like a multi-year, right?
Yeah, yes, that's a three-year contract, correct. Uh so here's the here's the other point that that I wanna make. So our tax maps, and I would encourage you to to visit uh. The the code enforcement office where we have those maps. Our tax maps are ten plus years old. They are tattered, they're paper masks, they're tattered. And whenever a property gets subdivided, how we denote that on the map is we actually, the assessor goes in with a red pen and draws. And so uh most communities have joined the Twenty First Century and have digitized uh those maps. And so that is something that we would like to do. The company that did those maps. Sold that part of the business to another company, C A I Technologies, and I forwarded you guys last week an email. Some correspondence that I had with them. And so they can digitize those maps for us and produce the paper. For a cost of about thirty five thousand dollars. So that's based on the number of parcels that we have and the fact that it's been so long since they've updated.
When you're going in and make the and the corrections that that have been hand drawn in there, that's all that's gonna be done? Are we scanning scanning that or?
No, no, man, it won't be scanned. It'll be done with G I S.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, no, so it's not just a matter of of scanning a paper.
So this isn't just taking recreating.
Yes.
Yeah, it's a pretty goddamn problem.
Yeah.
So Anthony, once the digital maps are done, will we have to go back to the company that created them to make? Any necessary changes or is this something that we'll be able to do or say?
We would not be able to do do it ourselves. So Katie Cog uh is is doing this for to some extent. I wish uh Dawn was still there. But but the data that they have attached there is very rudimentary uh data. C A I, what they can do is they can, again, using G I S technology. Have all of the assessing and tax debt for at each parcel. So you as property owners can go online and look to see what your assessment is, what the tax information is, so forth and so on. Uh updating the 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 tax map. Would cost, I think it was two or three thousand dollars a year.
Looks like twenty nine hundred years for.
Yeah, so so we don't need to, we don't need to do that every, we could get by with just doing that every other week. That's what most of we.
Yeah, it'll lead into like.
But if we wanted to link that with G I S so that you could go online and access any information that the town has about your parcel of of property. That would cost an additional six thousand dollars the first year. Um and then three thousand each year thereafter for for hosting. Uh there's some links in that email that I sent you last week to Manchester, Wayne and Belgrade, which all have this system. And uh I, if you haven't already, I would encourage you to go and noodle around on that, because it's it's pretty cool that the uh the data that you can pull up. Uh for each parcel land. And what that does is, right now, people want that information, you have to come to the town office to get it. As opposed to accessing it online or.
Can't look it up on the website anymore? I tried it a while.
Well, you can, but uh but again, it's not the complete data set that you would get with this uh with this G I S. So uh.
I looked at the one on Wayne, just to compare uh a little bit for the one on Winthrop. And it looked like the one on Wayne, I mean, it included like aquifers you can look at or the water tables for the area. You can look at um the flood zone for your tax map area. So it looked neat.
Yes, it's it's.
That's what I was. That's what I was curious about. Um and and overlays go along with the zoning boundary map.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, that will, will that be an overlay? So that's a mark to look and say, this boundary built halfway through this property.
Yeah, or the property owner can do that. So they'll know they'll know exactly how their property is, so.
Is there any or was there any discussion with Dawn or? Is there any of the plan for any F P uh assessed to offset any of this once it's on, whether it be by someone who's. You know, a project over a certain amount of money or something. So say, you know, you have a builder or a developer coming, would it be a chance, at least a three thousand? We decided to do that.
Uh I had not thought about how we must be able to monetize.
Okay, there might be some, if we do adopt the three thousand a year. Yes, at least.
So so as I said in the email last week, I mean, a lot of communities have paid for this using ARCA funds. We still have some ARCA funds available. I think this would be a good use. I mean, at the at a bare minimum, we have absolutely possibly got to update the 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 tax. Uh but if we wanted to spend the extra six thousand dollars, we could do that. Uh have a federally slip. And you know, G I S is not always, Jim can probably speak to this right now, G I S is not always terribly user-friendly. But when you go on those maps and those other communities, it's it's very busy to navigate.
It was neat. It kind of gave you a little bit of.
You start making a list of everything for ARCA funds that we could potentially use considering our deadlines, what the end of this year.
That's correct.
So I know that we've mentioned it throughout these talks a lot, like, oh, that could be.
We can use it here, use it there.
Yeah, that would be good to get a running one so far.
Yeah, so I mean, obviously, with a project this size, we wouldn't just go to C A I and say, yeah, do it. So we'd have to, we'd have to put out an R F P, a thirty five thousand dollar project. So. Uh unless I hear otherwise, I'd like to go ahead and create an R F P, put it out to the video, go from there. And in the meantime, we'll make the ARCA's.
Thank you.
Yeah, because I do think this will, on the back end, even though of the structure, generate more. Project.
Development.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Instead of looking at, oh, let's do it in Wayne, it's a lot easier.
All right, any other questions for assessing? All right, we'll move on to recreation. Longest ones.
Uh can you describe a late budget? Our principal twenty twenty four budget, what it was um. You can see we had twenty two thousand still unexpended as the trajectory of this is due or one of those is created. And our twenty twenty five budget was a six point three eight percent increase. Um which is substantial, but when you come back to what drives our expenses is minimum wage went up again this year. And that is um our biggest driver is the fact that um. Most of my staff's on minimum wage. And so when it goes up a dollar, um it's across the board, just trying to do a three percent pay increase. But when uh minimum wage goes up, everybody gets bumped. And so all my all my new staff do. And so uh that's that's the biggest part of our increase. Um the increased participation last year was 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 pretty spectacular. Uh that we had over six hundred different kids participate in at least one program. Our previous high had been four hundred seventy six. Uh the increase in participation means there's a greater expense, but on the other side of that, there's also income that reflects that. And that's what I put on the last, the last page there, that um. In twenty twenty four, five hundred sixty eight kids participated in our special activities. Uh that raised thirty two thousand nine hundred twenty six dollars of income. And the expense of the town was, to the budget, was twenty eight thousand eight hundred ninety three point six three. Um Kids Club, which uh has grown substantially every year and will be even larger this summer. Last year, we had eight hundred and sixty participant days, which averages twenty two kids a day. Uh that's nineteen thousand nine hundred dollars of income and nineteen thousand three hundred dollars in expenses. Um so when you add those two things together, the special program income is fifty two thousand dollars out of our budget, out of our. Hundred and. Twenty two thousand dollar budget. Um and forty eight percent of that and and. Of the income is fifty two thousand, the expense to the budget is forty eight thousand, so there's actually a a net win there for the town, for our budget. Um but the actual budget that is used, that is not reflected from the income from the sports camps or the different camps and Kids Club. Is actually only sixty six thousand nine hundred. That's the actual money that goes for paying for lifeguards, arson craft staff, track and field staff and things like that. So that's for that money, that's how that reflects off in our. Uh portable toilets and the subsidy that we can get out of the live for running. Questions?
Thank you on the way.
I can tell you that uh as of this moment, if I did it before I left the office, come up here. Uh we have two hundred and forty different children registered all around for some of the programs. Uh right now, we have a hundred and twenty nine signed up for swim classes already. Uh and we have forty eight signed up for Kids Club. I think this summer, we are, when you look at a Kids Club, that may be averaging closer to thirty kids a day.
Wow.
So we have um, I met a lady today, I I I her, it's been stunning me since I've seen the registration. That her mailing address is Raven. And I was trying to figure out how they end up here. It's where they're from and they just keep their mailing address in Raven. So it's just, I'm like, why are you coming to Winthrop today? Some um also, I can tell you that we finally got the backboards out.
Yeah.
And the courts are.
Already know it.
Basketball players and tennis players are fighting it out.
Yes, pickleball and and uh.
That's right.
And tennis and basketball are fighting it out down there. Uh my fence guy finished Maxwell Field on Saturday.
That was good.
And uh that is ready to go. Sports fields, we're hoping comes in tomorrow to do their thing. And then I believe it is on May twenty second, Lawson Properties will have the first game to be played on the new Maxwell Field. I believe that's the current schedule right now. So we're hoping that uh May twenty second will be the day that we officially open it up and that place will games on it, so.
Awesome. Um yeah, I fear the day you retire, Lonnie, to remember what you're gonna do without me, to be honest with you. Um.
August fifteenth, twenty twenty six.
Not that you're counting.
Counting already. Hell, we had to have a date, so we just had to have a day, so.
Uh yeah, I know. It's crazy, because I mean, I I grew up under your programs, you know, I can remember dropping. My dad was a a coach and dropping, getting the supplies, your shed and the arrival stuff, so. I I appreciate everything you've done. Um question, the when we did, when the town did the school, um a brand new high school. I do recall then after serving on the rec committee, that they put a a big chunk of property into the recreation in the future development of rec fields. Do you do you recall this, that the property from the right of Ramler Road, they cleared it out and.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we did.
For a beach ball field, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we uh we were looking at put the ball field in there.
Yeah, yes.
And uh.
Still under your.
I can remember the guy from Land Works came in and did the work for us and he said, uh you're gonna have to build that field about.
Right.
About ninety.
The Keith Moran with the death.
And because the amount of water there down that hill.
Yeah.
Would wash out any field that you put in. And so because we'd originally thought, what, two ball fields?
Yeah, two.
And then we realized, ooh, two ball fields puts us right back in the place we are before. We're parking on one thirty five on Stanley Road.
Yeah.
We're gonna be back parking on Ramler Road.
Yeah.
And it's not gonna make any difference, so.
From like. Okay. So that's.
I had been, now that's, yeah, that's never been, I had been here in Winthrop uh probably a total of a year. And John Cliche Construction Recreation came up to Winthrop and did a recreational assessment for the town of Winthrop. And I'm not sure where John went, but he said the only thing Winthrop really needed was a good sliding hill. And I'm not sure how he missed is this. With a parking lot right next door and, you know, schools um and his suggestion was to use that piece of property, cut down all the trees in there. And make a sliding hill. And I was like.
Yeah.
No, I don't think that's ever gonna happen.
So that is that been, so do you know, is that property just been relinquished back to like the school department then for that?
It was recreation park.
Yeah, it was recreational property, yeah.
Recreation property.
Cause we.
Behind steep woods.
Yeah.
Self-storage.
Yeah.
Um. Uh probably a hundred feet back from the backside of the properties on that side of Charles Street.
And it had been logged before, so I mean, that's something we just have to make sure we keep in, know that that's in the rec, that area.
Yeah.
And then the softball field with, sorry, the old softball field down by the old fire station.
Firehouse field.
That is still recreation.
That is still recreation, it's still.
It was there until the day. Okay.
I'll have lard and cheese breakfast down there.
Oh, my gosh, that's good. Okay, all right. So I just.
They clean up today, T-ball kids clean up. That's their cleanup job. They clean up that field every year, so.
Perfect, okay.
Yeah, but it's there, it's there for us to use, so.
Gotcha.
We now uh from when we began this project, ball fields in town, we used to have a two yard softball on Stanley Road. And uh that was pretty much it.
And that was like the least situation.
Now we have five, we've got five.
We got Davis' deal, which is up in middle school now.
And Davis' firehouse.
Yeah.
These two here and this year, we're using led by a school softball.
And the Davises have maintained pretty much by the rec department.
Yeah, we remember, we we do that, yeah. The school, the school rolls it, I mean, the school rolls all the things. I mean, they get brought, they get the, you know, they have the, it's a quick at the mall, so.
I do have one other question. I know um we had met previously before, we did approve the. I do have one other question, I know um we had met previously before, we did approve the fencing that you had just mentioned. Have we heard anything else regarding these sports complex that we have that whole presentation?
Meeting tomorrow and I know I'm going to be meeting tomorrow night. It was supposed to be last week or something, I think a game got rained out and so people that were supposed to be there to meet couldn't go. So, yeah, I don't, I, I don't know where we're at right now, to be honest, I, I don't want to speak out of turn. A lot of it is, we don't have much money to spend right now, so that's the next phase, is trying to raise the money to be able to, to get the next phase done.
And then, have they been pretty forthcoming with you as far as transitioning? You know, I know there'll be a plan eventually to transition the actual complex to the town, right? Was it town, not the school? The town, but not. Yeah, so that would have to probably become a rec thing too, okay, alright, something to think about when you two start talking. And make sure that we have a good plan.
Yeah, I understand you're not on the head of that committee, like that's something.
I've been a part of that committee since the beginning. I've been a part of that since the beginning, so.
Okay, so you're.
Tomorrow's meeting, is that a public meeting or just a private committee meeting?
I think it's just a private, I mean, just the, the community, I think, is just trying to get together to. Get our next step, we haven't, we haven't met since December, I think was the last time we met together. We really didn't, there wasn't much.
Alright, thank you. Appreciate you. Moving on to the next one, the Selena.
Yeah, the only thing I, I just wanted to make it that I. I just wanna make sure I was clear on this, that. After we had the. After we had the presentation last week. Uh we did find the twenty seven hundred dollars, so we do have that. And so I think there was some discussion if we found that, whether or not we wanted to include five hundred dollars. For one for carriers in the budget, my sense was, the answer to that was no, but I just wanna make sure that I'm correct.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is, when we're dealing with a lot of these groups, it's not that their, their needs or their asks are unwarranted, because they are. But then they are warranted, but once you start going off to one.
Well, if they rest it for five hundred bucks and they have twenty seven hundred bucks, you know.
The idea behind that originally was, you know, say, we figured, you know, when we, when we looked at it. Twenty years, almost twenty years ago. It was, we think, oh, maybe one student a year would use the, the service and that would cost five hundred bucks. So then they replenished it, but it never really got used.
Yeah, the thing is, I mean, if we're donating, I'd rather donate to the soup kitchen or something like that, that we, that really.
Yeah, and I thought it had been looked at getting moved to be under the school, school's. Because they have to establish the list of the graduates. And so I thought it may even be a budget, budget item under their budget.
So we're not including any of them.
Be best if someone could communicate with them to like, give them the guidance and also up there.
That's the only miscellaneous item I had was there's. Anything that strikes any votes.
Danabaska, Dan, we said we were gonna allocate.
We're waiting to hear.
I had told that you, you could speak to this, that the water levels are way down.
They are.
Well, even Veronica's down, everything's down.
I believe it's actually below what they uh.
They're, they're down.
So don't, don't tell them when you made it right.
This is all with the occasions where I've been right lately, I've shown great humility.
I think it's.
Yeah, I know, I know, your humility is what you're most proud of.
Alright, moving on to ambulance revenue. Aaron, boss talk here.
Yeah, Chief Bustell is here, so, so anyway, you folks wanted us to look at the inspection per capita fees, which we did. And we included a chart uh in the package, and so. You know, it really, I mean, Chief Devinsky said previously, it, it runs the gamut and it does. We, they're finies paying as little seven dollars per capita and as much as a hundred eighty three dollars per capita. That we found here in the state of Maine, and most, most of those rigs range from twenty to forty dollars per capita. Uh our fees are essentially twenty dollars per Monmouth and up to twenty five dollars per lane, so we're comparable. Uh we're in that ball. But nonetheless, I mean, and uh correct me if I'm wrong, Chief, but. I think we, Chief Bustell and I think that we can do better. And last week, last week, we talked with the city manager and the fire chief from the city of Gardiner. And we really liked the funding form that they had, and I'll try to explain to you, I'll, I'll try to explain this. They take uh what their proposed expense budget is. They deduct from that what they anticipate their revenues are gonna be, their collectibles. And so that leaves a net cost. And so they divide that evenly between a per capita fee and a usage fee. And what they do is they look at uh half of that, that cost, that net cost. Uh and, and. Create a percentage based on each town's population, how much they should pay at that cost. And do the same thing with usage, looking at a three year usage model. Uh and what that does is it. It ensures that gardener taxpayers are not subsidizing service in other communities.
Well, this is one of the things that we've talked about for years, and we were always told that reluctantly, if, if we went up. That some of these towns might drop.
Well, yeah, when I was on, this is more than like ten years ago. Delta did not have it, and they had been bidding out to Reed Field in Manchester, but they are not in a position to do that anymore. So that's gone.
And, and so I think I communicated with you folks previously, but right now. Uh Delta is charging everyone across the board twenty five dollars, and the reason, and they're, and they all, there are also some formulas out there that are. At North Stars that are super complicated and complex. And so, uh but I communicated with the executive director of Delta, and they said that twenty five dollar fee is a stopgap.
Right, they want to go to forty.
Yeah, and so next year is where they anticipate being, and I've heard anywhere from forty to fifty.
They want forty seven, they're targeting, so.
So if we go up, we're not gonna be.
So the community of Fairville, just the water bill, uh they were told they would be almost fifty dollars. Next year, so they're looking at trying to start their own ambulance right now, so, so. So what Chief Bustell and I would like to is incorporate this funding form into our ambulance revenue next year, I mean, it's too late to do. Do it this year, because you have to start those conversations with those towns that approved these budgets. Uh at their town meetings, which typically in June, and so. Uh this is something we're gonna be looking at to incorporate next year, and I think it's, I think it's gonna be something, as I said, that's gonna alleviate some of the pressure on.
So, I guess my question is, what do you, what do you think that that's gonna end up being in some of these towns?
Well, well, so, so when you, when you look at the per capita uh rate, which incorporates the usage. Uh and they also project that their collectibles are, are going to be, and they assign a percentage of those to uh to towns as well. Five of the eight towns pay more than twenty five dollars per capita, including uh, including Gardner. And so it, you know, it's really hard to tell right now what that's going to be, and part of it is because our costs are gonna go up. Uh you may recall that our EMS ambulance budget was increasing as a percentage more than any other department. Driven mainly by the new union contract, so.
Yeah, I mean, we're paying sixty four bucks and everybody else is paying twenty something.
Now, well, and, and we do have the biggest population, we do have the, the most calls, but we think that, we think that we need a formula that.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea, I've always, you know, guard, so Gardner had to do a ton of work to read, to kind of go through. All their stuff, a few years ago, they had lost a lot of their, their uh community membership when Northeast Angels. The northeast again like Delta. You know, went in with a great promise of, you know, cheap service, and then they couldn't sustain it. So then Gardner was able to go back and get those communities, but in the meantime, before they did that, they did a lot of work to get to a very good formula. Uh funding wise, that was fair across their participating communities. Uh and that made their ambulance service, I mean, they had, they, they spent a lot of money figuring this out. And they wanted to make their ambulance service sustainable, and I think they have managed to do that.
Yeah, so Chief, did you have anything you wanted to add to this?
I, I did, I want to bring up, they had mentioned that they have an association that they use with community members. From our surrounding communities, where they meet with them on a regular basis, they said a quarterly. And they discuss with members of the communities that they serve, like, hey, this is where we're at, this is where we wanna go, so. They are bringing this information forward to important people in those communities, so they can spread the word and say. This is our plan, this is what we wanna do. Yeah, they have got a ton of buy-in from the communities that they serve, and they said their feedback has been really, really good for that. So I, I think just transparency, that's what people want, right, they, if they want it to be fair, they wanna know what's happening, so. Yeah, and they wanna say, you know, when I, again, I also worked with Monmouth Rescue. Um you know, when, when that became less of a feasible organization, you know, it was a big deal, because Monmouth really. Wanted to have that, you know, input, and it makes sense, right, these people come to your homes. During the most vulnerable moments of your life, it's, it's nice to have that ability to have that feedback, so that's something that I agree, you should.
I have a question, um so for the formula, when you look at it, does it just include the population of per capita or other factors go into it such as mileage?
So there's no mileage involved, that was part of the North Star model, and it was, as I said, super complex, and so. Yeah, it's really just a matter of usage, the number of calls that you're responding to in each community and their, and their population.
And then, uh Aaron, while you're here, you may or may not be able to speak to this, I must, but um now, at one time, when we were staffing a truck in Reed Field. I know they had built and expanded their fire station and, and accommodated a lot of the requests from the EMS. Um side of things, uh is, is that model still in flux, you know?
Yeah, uh so, uh I talked to the uh town manager about it, they're open to it, but I think that's where. What Aaron posted here, which I'm glad that you brought that up, Aaron, this uh ambulance advisory form. That could help us to determine whether or not there's a need there and whether or not the community wants to support it, and by support it, I mean financially. And so, and so, in my mind at least, if we were to provide that level of service in Reed Field, Reed Field would have to pay.
Okay, that makes sense, and that's always my thought too, and then, does our town charter let us, how, how will that look? Going to get an advisory committee board or something?
I don't think it would be prohibited by the town charter, and so the idea behind that, if you have representatives from each of the communities that we serve. And uh, and so they, you know, once they are in the know on what we're budgeting and why, that they go back and sort of sell it to their select board. Uh members, and that, that makes it a little bit easier for the, for the community to just follow.
Similar to the communication tower, where you're collecting.
Yes, yeah. So, so anyway, and, and, you know. In short, we hear your concerns about ambulance revenue, we share those, we're gonna be interested.
That's just good information, I think Roy would be very happy. No, you would, I do, I think this is where he was looking, you know, to go.
Are we gonna talk anything about the proposed C I P and stuff?
Uh we might cheer on the meeting.
Well, yes, because he's here and I have a question.
About the ambulance safety firewall.
Oh, really? I'll do my best.
You'll, you'll be fine, because it, it is, it's a pretty straightforward one, I mean. John always proposed to re-chassis every year. I don't think we need to be budgeting for re-chassis this year, I think we ought to drive those rigs the way they are. And see where we go, uh and maintain them, and I, I didn't understand what he was trying to do. Now, same as horrible model, but right now with budget constraints, I'd like to whack that thirty six thousand dollars off for the next few years, not have it. And then me and Bruce have talked, not to pull you in on this, Bruce, but just talk about a different model rig, potentially, not saying this. Where do I go, but I don't think the cost of re-chassing something is really coming to uh. Is it value savings versus purchasing another whole rig, even whether to buy another whole one or not, I, I'd like to see that come out of the budget.
So, so let me ask you a question. So we're gonna. This time next year, we'll have a new ambulance chief. Uh I think that person should be involved in, in, in this discussion, and so what if we. Put at least some money towards an ambulance, whether it's a re-chassis or a new ambulance in this. You know, in the cap orders, or it may not be the, the full amount that you just discussed, but, but at least. At least we're socking away some money for the, for the day when we will, you know, a new ambulance, whether it's a whole new machine or just a re-chassis.
But it doesn't have to, I mean, that doesn't have to be expended.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
I understand your point to that, but for me, it's, it's just soon old this year, you'll get it next year, that's thirty six thousand dollars. Based on the things that we're looking at right now, that's something that we can just set aside, I'd rather add ten, fifteen or something maintenance. I don't wanna put that whole amount, but that's maybe I'm.
Well, it's the way I'm looking at it from a C I, from a C I P perspective, remember, you wanna try to keep those costs. So if we cut by that amount and we decide next year, we, we wanna reinstitute it, and all of a sudden, it's.
Ask something. I've been sitting on this council one hell of a long time, and I will tell you that I really want to look into, because. I can't possibly believe that some of this equipment, when I look at some of the other. Uh some other towns and what they're driving and what, whatever. We get cop, police off, cars every so often, what is the average out there of what this equipment lasts for? Because it seems like we're turning around, we're getting new, we're re-chassing this stuff every year, whatever. How, I mean, I'd like somebody to look into. What other towns, what is the average for this stuff, and, and can we, do we have to get new? Every so, you know, every X number of years. And, and I guess that's the question I have, it's, it's not only just this equipment, it's all this other equipment out there.
Yes, and I, yeah. And I can actually, I can remember you bringing that. I would say the thing about Winthrop that is unique to Winthrop is that the ambulances and was to travel a lot. Longer distances uh frequently than, say, the city of Augusta. Um they typically try to transport right to Main General a hundred times, whereas Winthrop has traditionally transported to St. Mary's. Uh Central Main, Frank Memorial, depending on, you know, where that patient wants to go, and then I think. Twenty miles one way, at least, I mean, that's conservative, that's like probably average, so. Yeah, um so, you know, I think that is a unique challenge to Winthrop. My question would be, and, and this goes back to Jim's uh concern for Oconnet, is that, you know, right now. You know, I know, when I started, we had two ambulances in a van. I was staff, I was hired to work on the van. Um and that was because the town had a lot of opportunities to pick up transfers, and we made a heck of a lot of money. Doing that, because again, but that was also a different formula for Medicare at the time, we were doing transfers up to, you know, dialysis rooms. Constantly every day, so I was gonna put five in the morning to do it, we made this town a lot of money. And, but unfortunately, those opportunities probably gone away, but I did also run trauma calls in that van. Um so it is feasible, um so, you know, that's something to think about, but now we have four fully stocked trucks. We stacked two. So, you know, that tells us that there's some wiggle room into what we decide to do going forward. Now, as far as capacity, I mean, we would probably need from you at some point, you know, how many times Augusta's had to come and do. Or how many mutual aid calls we've had to like terrify off because we were only staffing two trucks or something like that. You know, at one time in this community, there were sort of two trucks, and then you had the two trucks at Monmouth, and so there was lots of reserve. Now we provide that reserve um for, for the all of West Mac County, and I do think we have also done a lot of mutual calls for. For North Star and stuff like that. So, but I do think there's wiggle room, given that we have the four trucks and we're staffing them.
So why do we need four? So I think that's kind of what I was getting at, I mean, I know even with Danny was talking about the fire stations reducing some of our trucks. And, and you know, would we be able to go down a truck in it, I'm not trying to, I value all our emergency services, so it's not to take away from that. But I'm looking at this year's budget, I'm looking at right now, and I know we're gonna do some reevaluations, things are gonna change, shake out. Gonna be added back in next year, potentially, and then we might, to everyone's point here, look at, do we need four trucks? Potentially, and then we might, to everyone's point here, look at, do we need four trucks? Do we need, or reduce it, will we reduce it, or what other revenues are gonna be pulling in and what things are gonna look like? But I'm looking at this year's budget, not really forecasting, and I'm thinking, you know, are reevaluations gonna come in and? It may generate different revenues that we don't even know about or reduce it, so I'm just trying to save in this year's budget. So I look at that as, I I look at it all our vehicles, that even when I talk about the loader, the skid steer, and all those things, I see that everything's still. There, and it's tangible, that they wanna replace, we need to get down to that, and I and I look at it, uh. Even with the library stuff, and I guess just a couple of things I went and called or asked you to talk to. Richard about some of the things that he has on his here.
Well, well, that's an outdated first library, outdated.
Okay, so are all these out?
No, no, but but I'm just saying, that 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 was outdated, I think even at the time it was printed out, so now we're only looking at. Uh, drainage and elevator.
Yeah, you get a river with elevator forty-five, it's getting.
Okay, so we're down to thirty-five total.
Teen upgrade from fifteen and stops.
Yeah, that's gone too.
And that room twelve, yes, well, I can get an updated one, just to look at it.
Okay, so so that's something we'll do as part of the final budget, documents that you folks will be receiving.
Can you send them, yeah.
But then that will come in a week or so?
Sounds good.
Uh, as far as the re-chassis, I mean, that's the first year of a five-year, uh, lease purchase agreement. Or lease finance agreement, so if we wanna just push that off.
Yeah, I'd like to push it off considering.
But I will say this, just as far as, I mean, you folks are talking about a lot of stuff that I think. Our our next ambulance chief is going to have to really sit down and evaluate about what what we're doing, how and what.
Yeah, and I think that's some of the maintenance that me and Roy have brought up within undercoating the rigs and chassis, and that might prolong prolong these a little bit longer too. And then again, I'm not trying to discount what John's model was, and trying to get these things so they stayed up and running.
Yeah.
But I I think there's other ways for us to look at it, especially at these times, these days where we need to save. We need to look at maybe cutting some places and borrowing that for this year.
Yeah, and and just, you brought up the undercoating and just recall that that is part of the operational budget for the, uh.
Yeah, no, I remember you talking about it, so that's why I brought it up here again, I mean, that's should help prolong some of these chassis.
You know something?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, we all need to remember, and it's just, it's just slid into my head. You know, four years ago, if you owned a two-bedroom. Cave in a reasonable neighborhood, it was worth a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Okay, today, if you own that same home in reasonable condition, and it did have pieces in the neighborhood, it's worth three hundred and fifty or four hundred thousand dollars. So when we're talking about a four percent taxing increase this year. It's adequate a lot more than a four percent taxing increase was five years ago. And we we need to really, I agree with you, I mean, we really need to handle on like, there's a big difference.
Oh, wait, unless you build new property, then your property hasn't been revalued over the last five years, so you're you'll be paying on the same value that you had.
But look at just what's gonna happen in the future when we get to reevaluate.
Because it's coming, that there was a town down in, I think it's Southern Maine, that just got a rebound, they're all revolting, so you know what?
Yeah, and and so.
What's gotta happen is the state formula has to change. That is what has to change, all of this stuff that we're going through. You, we cannot do traditional valuations for tax purposes based on. Any amount of money people are willing.
So, so, so since we're talking about EMS, let's start by EMS, so what I'm hearing is. That the council would like to remove that thirty-six thousand dollars for the first year of the lease finance of the, uh. Of the re-chassis, and maybe move that, at least for the time being, to, uh, F Y twenty-third, so we just push that back. Is that, is that a very subject, okay, let me, let me write this down.
Oh, when we do do that, we're either gonna look better or not. This, we're down, we have it down below, down below seventy.
Yeah, yeah.
So that's thirty-six six thousand that we're saving. Are people keeping track of these figures?
Yes. Okay, so, uh, so let's ta-talk about some other capital thing, let's just work through this. These sheets that you have, another in your pack, love it, so Public Works, uh, and I can speak with, uh. And so, uh, he was up of mind to remove both the eleven thousand dollars for the skid steer. And the thirty thousand dollars for the loader, just feeling like we can get more.
Where's the eleven?
More hours, more hours, more usage out of those machines before we start to.
Agreed, I I think we should, in every instance where there's stuff, there's more usage. For some of this equipment, I absolutely agree that we should move this stuff off, I'm not convinced that we've been doing that. I mean, the way we should be doing it.
Can we also invest in maybe a training program so they don't destroy the equipment and for maintenance, other than?
It's it's something, uh, Councilman Wayman and I talked about is, we need to, we need to, you know. His contention is one of two things, that we're either trading this stuff in too too soon, we still got lots of life in. Or we're not properly maintaining it, so it has a longer life, so so both those things are true, you know, we need to.
They kind of dovetail under each other.
Yeah, so, so are we in agreement then that we'll remove that forty-one thousand dollars combined? And and we'll, and again, we'll just, at least for the time being, we'll shift that to F Y twenty-thirty, just just to put it off here till we can assess.
Yeah, one of the things that we've done to the, uh, the transfer station and skid steers is. It shouldn't particularly, you don't wanna drive an ambulance till it breaks down because you might be trying to save someone's life. But if the skid steamer breaks down at the dump, and it proves to be too expensive to repair, we can replace it. So there's no need at all for early caution in repairing a lot of this equipment. You know, that includes the loader and the backhoe as well, I mean, we can run that stuff till it's on its last legs. And we have enough redundancy between all machinery and between, uh, the road department. That we can fill in the gap if something has to get hold of D O A.
But I think that what Anthony said, we have to do right away. There has to be training and there has to be basically maintenance on this stuff. And that can't wait till the next year, it has to be done, implemented as soon as we can this summer.
So I have, I have another P W.
Yeah, me too.
Okay, go ahead, first.
All right, well, we have the tank maintenance, gas tank pump maintenance, that all got taken care of last year, right? Last year's budget, the twenty thousand dollars.
That's correct.
So that was all that was spent.
Yeah.
I don't remember, I know we had some values on there, so I know it's not this year's budget, but just was wondering, there's no carryovers from that? And then we still deal, we're stuck with the scales, right? For the next four or five years?
Oh, yeah, we need to continue saving for new scales.
Okay.
And and keep in mind, so so that top portion there is your lease finance?
Yep, no, I saw that.
Bottom portion is saving up to.
Capital reserve.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm just thinking, you know, just making sure that, cause those are a light head down there, so.
Okay, so, so I'm gonna, uh, propose something here that's actually gonna be an increase to that capital reserve.
Yeah.
Although I do have an option. So, um, as I communicated with you folks, we had to. Uh, hire Stephen McGee to do some culvert work for us, because we were shorthanded in public works by two people. In order to keep the paving projects moving forward. In addition to that, um, we have had to put more material on some of those roads, just because of how bad a shape that they were in.
Yeah.
So, well, I'm gonna give you two choices. We can either reduce the number of roads that we pave this summer in order to recoup. Somewhere in the neighborhood of seventy-five thousand dollars, or we increase the capital reserve for F Y twenty-five. By seventy-five thousand dollars in order to, uh.
Continue paving?
Continue paving all those roads that we have in our schedule. I would advocate for the latter, simply because we've skinned too long on roads, and so. We we really need to make that be, uh.
So please take that surplus.
Um, I'm not prepared to answer that question.
Seventy-five thousand dollars.
I know, but I'm not prepared to answer that question without having the finance to.
Can I, I I would say you're smart for us to do it now, cause the longer we're waiting, the more we're gonna put towards it. But also looking at us, for a mulch head for the excavator, which we've never had, that's thirty-five thousand dollars. Yes, thirty-five thousand dollars to take off the table again right this, now you've just reduced it down to forty thousand dollars, you need to come up with it for the maintenance.
I agree with most of. The mulch head.
And they're very handy, and I understand my man would want one, but we've gotten bought at this point without it, that's a pretty big expense that we could probably forego. Especially if we needed to put it back towards the pavement, which is way more important, so now we're only looking at forty thousand dollars, seventy-five thousand to try to recoup.
And forty-five thousand, we can think of.
Or forty, it's just forty.
Forty.
Yeah.
But he's gonna have. We didn't use fifty thousand sand and salt this year, do we?
No, but we probably wanna hold on that, we don't know what the next one is gonna look like.
So what's the story with the sand and salt shed?
Well, eventually we're gonna need.
Well, I I respectfully suggest that we have this huge building out there. Yeah, on the Anarvesco, uh, that we're still in.
Yeah.
Some piece of equipment in, but why can't, you know, that door be made larger?
Well, you you would have to cut new doors, doors, I think you'd have to cut more than one door there for egress and ingress. And, um, I don't know, I mean, it's a it's a question worth exploring, Andy, but, uh. Uh, but even that's gonna cost money, so I would, I would advocate for 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 leaving the money for the sand salt shed.
But to this day, and I live in this town, my hate life, I've never seen a sand salt shed, ever.
You're looking at.
Where is it out? Winthrop is an anomaly in that.
Yes, so, so, I I I think, yes, I I don't know, I think it's, you know. You see them out there, but even, you know, not every town has one, you know, we've gotten by without it, I don't see it as a huge. Huge, huge need, especially where we are, trying to look at things, and like, and you know, if you're asking for culverts, if you're asking for paving. And for some basic everyday infrastructure things, then I'm on board. But I don't think I need another sand and salt shed that I'm gonna have to maintain and then do so forth down the road right now.
What they're down through six years, it's three hundred dollars.
Yeah.
I I agree.
Gonna cost us anywhere, one, uh, ten percent of that to make the changes necessary.
Yeah, I agree, and we.
I would say this year too.
Okay, so we'll just move move that from twenty-five to thirty, right, for the time being.
For time being.
Well, well, I mean, I think one of the issues, Bruce, and I don't know how big of an issue this is in Winthrop, but, um. There are environmental issues, if if you don't have, uh, a sand and salt shed with the salt in particular, you risk the the possibility of. Polluting it off of. Well, also, I mean, I mean, where I live is what that community is facing, they're having to build a, uh. A public water system that will serve thirteen homes, because for decades.
We've got a unique situation here, though, everyone's on public water, sewer, the sand and water watershed, is it? And then we've got it where we can dump it right over the hill and keep pushing it, go for days, hours, years.
I mean, the.
About the salt above the shed, or that building down there, we we need to look at that.
Yeah, but there's a reason for it, Anthony, I get it, but we're not hamstrung into doing it right now.
Uh, on the police department's, uh, capital, uh, two, seven. There's a, uh, in the capital reserve, there's a fifteen thousand dollar expense for. Uh, office furniture for the police station, he said that can be removed.
Oh, I got it, I got it, yeah.
It was fifteen thousand.
That's a generator replacement, that's future, that's future, you're trying to put a generator down there?
Or or guys?
Yeah. I think right now we have a portable one, is that right, or we did?
Station exterior repainting.
Did they do that last year and talk to Ryan about it? There's a lot we put on there.
But they just painted the thing in in twenty twenty. Why would they paint it again?
Uh, are you talking about this year?
Station exterior repainting roof.
Five twenty-two.
Second from the bottom, yeah. Why are they doing that now? They just did it in twenty twenty. That doesn't make sense. I mean.
Cause Tony told me he needed to do some stuff last year, and he had a budget line for it, and he didn't do it from last year, so.
No, I think there, I think there was a leak.
It was something to do with that.
Let me just, let me just ask you for.
The other question, uh, can we is, there are some really serious problems with the grade on the front, we need some step. And that grade is forcing, not only destroying the entry doors. But it's letting one run down in between the, um.
But didn't we address?
Steps, well, I don't know what happened, so between the steps and the foundation wall, and it's working hard on just. Grabbing the foundation wall there, so something major is gonna have to be done there, it's gonna.
Well, I almost think at some point too.
It's gonna happen.
Yeah, well, I think we need to really start thinking about, you know, how much money. We really want us to keep putting into this building, and I don't think, maybe there's a lease option up by where up in the old, uh, plant up here. That we could look into, get, you know, you get the dispatch out of there, and then you're not having the public use that, and it's, I don't, something. But where we start to 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 save, try to look and save money. The building is horrifying. I don't, I know, the problem, mill, cause they're used. No, I know, I I, it is, I'm sure it is, but I just.
So you're talking about moving it where?
To the new power mill up on the hill. Crossing the fire station, you know, even if it was a temporary thing, so we'd figure out what, you know, something to do it. Because this this is gonna drain money. And it's all of our critical infrastructure is in that, it's horrifying, to me.
Yeah.
I've responded, you know, I I've seen what happened when the system fails, right, um, and it's horrifying, and so.
The places are wanting to go out, and I.
I just feel, could you imagine if there was a fire in that basement, like what would we do? It would be a nightmare for this town, it would be would be a problem, and we would have to come up with solutions really quick, that would be really expensive.
So we.
Well, looking at like the general upkeep, or, I mean, we've been doing twelve thousand, thirty thousand, now twenty-five thousand. That's in three years, that's fifty-five, sixty, that's. It's almost a hundred thousand dollars, net upkeep, I don't understand what the hell their general upkeep, I mean, painting, that's got, that's.
Well, you've got a building that's nearly two hundred years old.
Yeah, but how many, how many layers of paint?
It's not just, it's not just paint building, I mean, it's plumbing, and so it's wiring, it's mechanic.
I think we need to talk to Chief Irland about that, I mean, he gave a pretty succinct understanding of what needs to be done.
We paid a lot of money to have that building ref refurbished.
It was a waste of money.
Yeah, I can see that now.
For the, uh, commercial space, that's up at the Carlton Commerce Center up there, um. Crap, excuse me, actually, the fire department, are they on a generator if they lose power?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, cause I know that they're planning on moving the secondary.
Yeah, it's gonna be, yeah, it's gonna be a disaster recovery if they.
I think they're removing the, uh, whole, um. Right, but they're also, I believe they're also planning to move their.
Talking about.
Critical incident, like.
I was just thinking, if we were to move up to that, and something happened up there, then. And you're restricted to that one area, so I was just thinking, if there was a secondary location for the police department or something somewhere else. And you're restricted to that one area, so I was just thinking, if there was a secondary location for the police department or something, somewhere else.
Good point.
You mean in the future, if they were all up there?
Right, instead of the leasing option up there, looking at another location, so that way it doesn't get bogged down there.
They'll get the ambulance service down there, they have the backside.
Cool, doing with the area underneath the high school gym.
That's Josh's office, the transportation area.
Under the high school, oh.
The old high school.
Like locker rooms?
The old cafeteria.
The old shop.
Yeah.
Yeah, the shop, yeah, the boiler. Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you. Anything else for the police department?
I think so, I'm gonna go to the best twenty-five and then really.
All right, and then library, we already went over, so we go to EMS, we already went over recreation capital.
Yeah, and so we're removing that fifteen thousand dollars from the waterfront, uh, repair it, because remember, we're gonna use the, uh, the tennis court reserve.
Yeah, they got skateboard reserves, Barney got creative, good hands.
And then on to the fire department cabinet.
Maybe, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yep, and townwide.
And so we can remove that, uh, uh, well, I'll have to ask the finance director if we remove that hundred thousand dollars, since we've already appropriated. Funds towards that, towards the townwide revaluation.
Yeah.
It's like.
Waiting until tomorrow.
Is that dedicated, is that dedicated?
Yeah.
We're putting, we're putting just a thousand dollars on the T S I, uh, uh, K I S maps.
Uh, so, if we move forward with, uh, with the maps that we talked about earlier, it's gonna be a sense of presentation, we wouldn't have to. Well, we might wanna, we might, maybe this first year, not necessarily, but after that, we would probably wanna put some money in there each year just for the, uh, the hosting.
Well, it would be three, it could be a shit.
Well, I don't know what you would wanna do, so if it's three thousand dollars to update, then you wanna put fifteen hundred dollars in every year, so that you can do that every other year.
Yeah, right, what's been spent out of that mask?
Oh, I don't, I don't.
Going, what, you don't? I get that.
All right, um.
Yeah, I think that's some pretty good looks, I, I really.
Yeah.
So what do we got now? Eighty-five. Forty-one. Eighty-five.
So, so let me, yeah, I don't wanna make any calculations here, cause I'll, let me, give me a chance to do that tomorrow, and then I'll send you guys an update.
Just to go over real quick, just to confirm, uh, so we'd be removing the skid steer loader for forty-one thousand.
Right.
The salt shed would get pushed to twenty thirty, so that's fifty thousand. The mulcher head for excavator, uh, thirty-five thousand, and then we need adding seventy-five thousand for.
Wait, was that, mulcher head, that was thirty-five thousand?
Yeah.
Oh, I heard that.
Adding seventy-five thousand for paving.
Yeah.
Uh, removing office phone, three seven, police department fifteen thousand.
Right.
We're gonna ask about the exterior repainting.
Yeah.
Medic one, medic three, or thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
Anthony. I, I also wanna be, I, I did see Matt Havel in there for the skid steer, spare tires, I also wanna make an argument, he needed maintenance for the loader, since we're not, but when the workers can do it, make sure he's got the maintenance he needed to do for that.
Without.
You know what I'm saying?
Yes, that, that's in the operational budget.
And I wanna make sure he did have, he had the, I remember him having the skid steer tires, I just don't wanna. Where we're taking a, a loader out, like, make sure he can maintain or fix what he wants fixed on that loader. And remember to set up to do with it, the weekends pushes need to be looked at, and I think potentially the brakes, but.
The, the other thing was, the skid steer has, um, pavement tires on it.
Yeah.
And they're gonna go to, to try to tread tires.
He had those in the.
Be more effective, so.
He had that in the operational budget, except for four grand a thousand B, so, but I didn't see the loader stuff.
Can you ask, uh, Vernice about the, um. The surplus taking like forty thousand or something, a little bit of money, for that, to replenish that paving?
To offset the pay.
Yeah, to offset the paving. A little bit of money, not, not, you know. That shouldn't be your one ship. So I guess my question is, um. With these budgets, I'd still like to see some of the, the managers, um. Go back and try to find some savings.
Okay, so, so, I'll be clear.
Yeah.
There are two departments that had any substantial, it was recreation, which we heard from tonight.
Yep.
The other was ambulance service, because they have new, the new contract. Every other department was either up a tick or down a tick or more, so I don't know if there's anything left to be, be cut.
Well, with some of this stuff taken out, how much do you, I, I want to know?
I'm not gonna guess.
All right.
The only thing I, I would like is, is with the library budget, and I, I'd like to talk with Richard again, and I apologize, but if you could send me, I'd just like to get a better quote on the drainage, I just feel like that's still like.
Oh, well.
I still think that's a huge, it, it, we could put it out to R F, I'd want somebody else to look at it, I just.
Well, we, well, we definitely would, yeah, we definitely would, we definitely would put it out to, to R F P. Yeah, we would for a project like that, because, because if we, we can't look somewhere.
I still, just, we, we put it in a budget, that's something I've always been dealing with before, I mean, I still think we can do it. I mean, it's, I understand we're down in, in public work, so maybe we need to, you know, we can maybe get a contractor, from somebody from another work, you know, to, to help us.
Yeah.
Cause I don't want that staff to struggle either, so.
Well, again, I mean, that's.
Have to try for, for something.
That's something I would, that's something I would talk with the public works.
Yeah, yeah.
Is, is this even feasible?
Yeah.
For us to, to participate in, and I wouldn't expect them to do the entire project, but, but some of it.
I think they could do a lot of it, especially I know the area, and I know right where they're talking about, Bay Street and, and up Bowden Street, that one little corner, they can, they'll be able to. Straight quite a bit of that away, I mean, I know a couple contractors that might would do it for a little cheaper, so.
And the other thing we can look at, was moisture reduction membranes along the foundation line, it's gonna take down there anyway.
Yeah.
I mean, moisture reduction membranes are designed to keep the water in, but it, they can also be used on the reverse side and keep the water out.
Yeah.
So water can penetrate that because you have a moisture reduction membrane, and there are not a lot of moles.
Yeah, there, there's some other, I just like to look at a couple, I don't know, I know, I'm not saying Long Hill doesn't know what he's talking about, or any of these guys don't know, but just. There's some, there's some younger guys out there looking for perfect business, and you know, this, they get running around trucks, and you check with, with Buzzles, and he's running around in this new excavator and truck, and everyone's got a little rig and something, something going, so I think that's not a big, not a big job.
Though, do keep in mind, I mean, we're, we're not looking to go out and hire them right now, I think Richard was just trying to get the ballpark figure that we could plug.
We're talking that number two, I just think it's still high.
But, right, but I mean, you can always go back to these guys and say, you know, can you do, can you do better than that?
Understood, I just think it's still too high, I think it's.
Yeah, I do.
I think our public works, that'll be fine, uh, starting by that.
Yeah.
How much is he asking?
He's fifteen, fifteen thousand.
This year and then fifteen next year, right?
Yes, to do the back, other side.
That's thirty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That's a lot of money.
That's a lot of.
Yes, it's a lot of money, it's a big building, it's got a lot of water.
I think we could pay him all the way around, it'll probably call it all good. By the way, it.
It need a water to be absorbed.
So I'd just like, so, yeah.
For me.
What are we looking at next on, on each name?
I don't know what we're getting the next, what are we doing next?
Uh, the only things I know for certain is we will be mineral extraction ordinance. And we will be awarding the radio communications consultant.
Okay, contract.
When we've done anything, we're talking about recreational and the, the pier, Roy brought it up to me, he had somebody maybe looking at, and he's still looking at that, or Lonnie's still looking at getting rid of the, the cement pier?
Uh, Councilman Wayman said he was talking with someone about.
Yeah, he was talking to McGee, he was talking to Jeff about McGee about maybe what they're gonna do to get that out of there, and how are we looking at with the. You're gonna must have gotten some bids on that little boat down the fire station.
Yes, but they're all sealed.
Hmm, wasn't that open?
I forget.
Okay.
There's something that's not.
That's good. The old fire.
Aluminum?
Oh, the hundred thousand dollar bulb was releasing there, for twenty-five, twenty thousand dollars.
Hundred fifty thousand.
Not on my, not on my boat.
And FYI, I did check.
Hidden in the coast guard.
Is there anything else?
Current.
Thank you, Anthony.
I do have one question.
I don't know, I haven't.
Maybe reach out and get an update on that, so it's a complex, that was something that we had discussed as far as coming out with a long-term maintenance plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, we gave, we gave, we gave it's turned over.
Yeah.
Right, and so, um, and they were talking about, you know, doing phase two of that complex, and it was since, you know. Related to me as a question about the fencing down there, that should have been part of that complex.
We should probably get an update anyways, just a general update.
Yeah.
When we meeting the twentieth?
Yeah, I'm sure Kay was coming, cause Anthony's a big part of that.
Well, I, I'd probably ask Jill Stone.
Okay, is there anything else rather than this?
No, I'm good, I'd like to move to adjourn the meeting.
Seven forty?
Seven fifty.
And yeah, Linda, all okay there?
Yeah, now you're early.
There.
We're moving on time.
Is there a meeting?
Yeah, we'll stop before.
Getting the vision on time, finally.
Sure, come on.